Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Atalanta City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Atalanta and Victor Valley Chambers of Commerce. I am Mark Crefield, the Hisperia and Victor Valley Chambers of Commerce CEO, and it is my honor to serve this forum as your moderator. This is one of two candidate forums which were divided by using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate, and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponents answer each question. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. We will finish up with closing statements, again with one minute for each candidate. All of you participating in this forum have the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt the other candidate's time or to disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum and will publish it on both the Atalanta and Victor Valley Chambers website and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Sonia Miranda, the Atalanta Chamber Office Manager. Sonia will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion, and closing statements, she will then hold up a yellow sign. She will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will thank you, and we will mute your microphone. I would now like to introduce the four hopefuls who are running for the Atalanta City Council election and are here with us today. In alphabetical order, Jaclyn Diaz, Tanya Edwards, Roy Isaiah III, and Daniel Ramos. Unfortunately, candidate Diana Esmeralda was unable to join us. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which the candidates will speak was also using a blind draw. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Jaclyn Diaz. You have one minute.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Diaz, and I am running for city council because I am very, very interested in the way that our city is being ran and the discrepancies that are happening. I feel like we should be more community-based, and right now I just don't see that happening in Atalanta. I own my property here, and I would love to keep my property here as well as make my property value go up in profit as time goes on, but that's not foreseeable at this current time only because of the economic discrepancies that are happening with the city.
Thank you. Daniel Ramos, you have one minute.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. First and foremost, let me thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to participate in this forum. Appreciate the time and the energy and the communication, Mark, that you've actually put out within the last couple of weeks. Kudos to you guys. My name is Daniel Ramos. I am currently the City of Atalanta's Planning Commissioner. I have been the commissioner for just about two years here in the city, and I am running for a city council here in 2020 because I feel that currently with the experience that I've had as a commissioner in the city here for the last two years and the relationships that I currently have within and outside of my network, I feel that it is in my best interest and in the city's best interest for me to use my network and my platform to continue moving our city forward and running for city council here in the city.
Thank you. Roy Isaiah, you have one minute.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to join this meeting. My name is Roy Isaiah. I'm a resident of Atalanta for over 23 years. I feel like the city could use my services as I've been involved in youth sports. I've dealt with our elderly in the community. I've been a leader in youth sports for over 23 years. My kids graduated from schools here in the City of Atalanta, Victor Valley College, and I'm very knowledgeable. I've been a psychiatric nurse for 13 years, and I feel our city needs a lot of help, and I want to offer that help to our city so that we can become great again.
Thank you. Tanya Edwards, you have one minute. Make sure you unmute yourself, Tanya. Tanya, you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you very much for letting me share this evening. My name is Tanya Edwards, and I'm running for the Atalanta City Council. I have been a community leader for a few years. I've been feeding the seniors, and I've been putting activities together for the residents for quite some time, running festivals, and I just felt it was in my heart, it was a good thing to do to try to bring and build and bridge community involvement together. What's important to me is policy and procedure. I think we have a great, beautiful city, and I think it's very important that we need to start to utilize what we have in our city and come together with the community so that we can start to bridge the gaps that we're missing. You know, we have some issues, but I think we have a lot of good, and we need to just bring community together so we can bring the good together. And thank you for letting me share this evening.
Thank you. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper, and please wrap up your answers before we are obligated to mute you. Question one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion-dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience, and education do you have that suggests Atalanta's residents should trust you with their city? Daniel Ramos, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Mark. So what skills and experience and education do I have that suggests Atalanta residents should trust me with our city? Well, we'll start, we'll begin with my, I have a strong military background and government background as well. I did 15 years serving our amazing United States Navy. I participated in Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Southern Watch, and Operation Anaconda as well. As well as that, I've also had the opportunity to manage several different businesses in many different industries. And most importantly, one of the things that I feel really, really proud of, and I like to speak a lot of, because I'm currently still doing that, is I've had the opportunity to train, coach, educate, and mentor thousands of individuals, young and old, whether it be through community programs, whether it be through businesses that I manage. So just my knowledge of business in conjunction with my ability to coach, mentor, train, as well as understand people, and not only create relationships, but mend relationships and bring to the table the ability to bring multiple people to the table and work together, I feel is one of the reasons that I am the favorite candidate or should be the candidate taking one of the seats at this upcoming election.
Thank you. Roy Isaiah, you have 90 seconds. Please unmute yourself, Roy.
I worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs for 13 years as a psychiatric nurse, where I took care of our veterans, helped them rehabilitate from drugs or whatever's part of the service that they have problems with to get into the system of the world again and become a model citizen or a great citizen in the world. I've coached numerous of teams. Recently, I was the president of the High Desert Kings as football, where I've led kids in and out of different experiences in life. I'm the owner of the Z Boxing Club right now. Unfortunately, I'm in the City of Victorville because they didn't have room for me at Atalanta right now, where I have kids that's been coming over to my gym for over a year free. Also, I deal with the community in a high aspect. I give rides out, I take them shopping, and I just feel like I can really support our city. Our city needs support, and we're going to start that by dealing with the young. We have to raise them up to be able to take our place and keep our city great. That's a problem I think that we have with our city is that we fall out of pocket, and we don't keep up with time. So we want to keep up with time and make sure we raise these kids upright so when they do take our place, our city will continue to grow.
Thank you. Tanya Edwards, you have 90 seconds. You need to unmute yourself, Tanya.
I am a business owner myself, so I know how to run a business, and I know how to communicate. I've been successful at it. I've been dealing with St. Mary's and working with partners in our city with different avenues to bring resources into our city. And I've been working with the residents for years now. I'm self-starter. I'm motivated. I have education. I've been involved here in our city for so long. It's so important to me that all of us can be able to participate in helping to serve our municipality and our corporations, and that you can trust me. I have a good, solid background, and I'm responsible, and I have always followed through with everything that I've ever started in this city or with any business I've worked with. I've been a screen printer for over 15 years, and I have a great reputation. I start from the beginning, and I always finish strong. And whenever there's ever been a problem with any type of a job that I've worked with in somebody else's capacity, I've always been a problem solver. I'm here to solve problems. I'm here to communicate. I'm here to build relationships, and I'm here to make sure that you understand I'm trustworthy, and this is important to me, and I'm here to make a difference in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn Diaz, you have 90 seconds.
Serving as a city council member, I bring my compassion, my commitment, my understanding, my perseverance, and my effective money management and budgeting skills. I look to bridge the gap between old and new Atalanta. We are all Atalanta. We are all a community. We should be working together, not against each other. I have lived here for four years, and I have seen the division that has already been created between old and new Atalanta as if one is better than the other, and it is not. We are one community, and we should be working and operating as one and as a team to build a better foundation for us going forward as Atalanta, the community, the city, the people. So I bring everything that I possibly can and all of my passion forward in going forward with being a city council member for this city.
Thank you. Question two. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing those goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council member? Roy Isaiah, you have 90 seconds.
Well, first of all, when it comes to conflict, you have to be open-minded. You have to be able to show your colleagues exactly what your vision is. They might not always agree, but if you can show them, they'll know better. And if elected, some of my goals would be to make sure that our citizens are safe and feel safe. Make sure that the door is open for our citizens to come in, comment, and tell us the things that we need to change, and make sure that we make changes because that's the biggest part that I see in the city. In the past, we were told that there were going to be changes, and there weren't. There weren't the changes, or we didn't see what we expected to see. So as a city council person, I would try to make sure that we enforce that and that we took care of our problems in the city. And if we speak on something, that we make sure it's done and not just thrown off to the side. Also, me as a person, I get along with practically everybody. I don't get hot-headed or upset or anything. So I would be able to talk to my colleagues with a calm manner and express myself, be able to express myself. But it's not about an argument. It's about us also being leaders in this city to come together as one to get this city back in order the way it should be.
Thank you. Tanya Edwards, you have 90 seconds.
If I were elected, I'd want to bring back parks and recreation. That is my heartbeat, so that we can utilize these buildings that have been locked up with contracts and utilizing the senior club for such a short period of time of two and three hours with no entertainment for seniors or to have anything that our seniors could even enjoy for that a few hours if they only had time to eat. And it's a passion of mine. I've been very involved in there with already building that and creating that, and also that they can build what they want to have. They need to have their own board, and I want to really express hardly how important that is that the seniors get to choose what they want to do and that we represent them fair. Especially in this time of crisis, standing up and being there for them, that's so important. And I jumped right in soon as all this had happened with COVID. I was there with them, and I stayed through it the entire time every Friday, feeding the seniors and protecting and making sure what their needs were. If it was even getting a ride to the doctor, I was there for them. And in conflict, I'm not a conflicting kind of person. If there's a situation, I head it on. I don't sugarcoat things. I discuss things. I'm level-headed. I am able to communicate. I enjoy people, and everybody's different. We're going to have 35,000 residents that are going to come in, and they're going to want to communicate. And it's very important that all of their voices matter to me, that we all are.
Thank you. Jaclyn Diaz, you have 90 seconds.
I would like to build on current policies. Atalanta may be a small city, but the vision should not match the city. The vision should actually be bigger. There are lots of policies that are already currently in place, but I just feel like the dream and the vision for this city is too small. I want to encourage and facilitate accountability and connections that will bring the community together in a safe, healthy, clean environment all while negotiating and compromising with my colleagues to make sure that the vision is not as small as the city is.
Thank you. Daniel Ramos, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, sir. Jaclyn, that was great. Dream and vision is too small. I love it. I'm going to steal that from you, and I'm going to use it. Policies, right? So I have quite a few policies that I would love to speak about, but I've got about 60 seconds. So I'm going to select one, which is the dearest to my heart. And I am, I will, and I'm currently working on bringing scholarship monies to our graduating students, right? One statistic that we don't talk about a lot is our graduating students in Atalanta. They're not going to college. Why? 64% of is the average of kids that go to college here in the state of California. Right now in Atalanta, it's 50%, right? Our kids aren't going to college because they don't want to go to college. They can't afford college. So how are we going to get them money so that they can go to college so that they can return and be better citizens for our community? I have a plan, right? I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag too soon, but you guys will be hearing about that pretty soon. Conflict. Conflict, but any leader should expect welcome and almost embrace conflict because it's going to happen, right? The definition of conflict is a disagreement, right? Get ready and be prepared for many disagreements. However, right, a true leader knows how to get over conflicts. How? By clear, concrete communication with everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question three. You should be aware of the important role economic development plays in a sustainable city. The City of Atalanta has not seen any type of growth in the past 25 years until recently. How do you plan on improving and attracting more economic development? Tanya Edwards, you have 90 seconds.
Well, being that I've just been on the outside, kind of looking in and not being able to be inside to understanding, I need to find out more of what's lacking. Where do we stand on contract-wise? Where are we? And what can the residents bring in? We can't afford more tax credits. We need to bring in more revenue. But if we're going to bring in more business, if we're going to continue to fix our roads, we need to continue to bring in more business. Mom and pop business is so important. I mean, it's what's built the nation. And so if we can't bring those in without trying to find a solution to what's lacking so that we can stop spending, we've been spending and spending and spending, but nobody has been able to communicate with it because we don't have stability. Our community's broken. We just, we need to, my main thing is that we have to communicate or work on a solution to stop the tax credits and stop giving the cow away. I think that is, the city just can't hemorrhage any more revenue. We, sorry, we just, we can't attract it, but it's how we have to go about it. We need to get our city and beautify our city so it looks attractive. That's going to be the way that we're going to bring in.
Thank you. Jaclyn Diaz, you have 90 seconds.
I feel that we should organize a specific team that is dedicated specifically towards seeking certain business contracts that actually help grow Atalanta as a city, as a total, as a whole in such things like a grocery store for Atalanta. Atalanta is a small city, but once again, we are dreaming small. We need to dream bigger. We need our own grocery store. I personally don't like to travel 17 minutes just to go pay high prices for groceries. And there are elderly here that do not drive. There are children here who do not have mom and dad at home, and they can't just walk around the corner and go get a meal for their siblings. So there is a lot of things that are going on in this community, just period, in just a big basis that can actually help grow our community if we had the available resources to do so. As of right now, we do not. So in order to build those resources, we need a specific team that will actually seek out what the city needs and bring it forward so that way we can utilize it as a community.
Thank you. Daniel Ramos, you have 90 seconds. You need to unmute yourself, Daniel.
Sorry about that. Okay, so I feel the key word, key phrase in that question mark is when you said "until recently." Key phrase. I love it. You will hear many promises from other candidates which have absolutely no access, relationships, or experience. There's absolutely no reason to disrupt this current administration. It's the best the city has had in many years. We all want the same thing, and that is to live, work, and play and do business in the same city we live in. Ladies and gentlemen, we've invested over $5 million in capital improvements by paving new roads and repaving old roads, not years ago, this year. We've brought you new sidewalks under the Safe Roads to School program so that kids no longer have to walk in the street or on dirt roads. That didn't happen years ago. That happened this year, right? We have tons of other projects that I can sit here and mention. I'm going to continue to do that, and I'm going to continue to do that by using the relationships that I have with our current council members, with our current city staff, and with our current network. So I'm going to continue to do what I have been doing for the last two years.
Thank you. Roy Isaiah, you have 90 seconds.
To piggyback off of something that Daniel just said is, what I see, we have some resources, but the problem is Atalanta have to make their residents proud of their own city. We have contractors come in here, and when the contractors come in here, they're bringing people from down the hill to make money from our city, Atalanta, to go spend it back in Palmdale, Rancho, Fontana, which is not really fair to our residents. If our residents were offered these jobs and given these jobs, not only would they make Atalanta money, they would return that back as revenue for our city by buying homes, by spending money here in our city. We don't want to hire a lot of people that's going to take our city money and spend it somewhere else. Not only that, they would be able to help their kids focus more on education if they have the money, feed their families better, help beautify our city. If you own a home in this city, you're going to want it to look good. But if you're just renting and you have no money, you might be upset with the city, sort of say. But we need to come together and figure out a way to put this money in our residents' pocket and help them work for our city and their city. And that will really make us have a strong relationship with all the residents in Atalanta.
Thank you. Fourth question and last question. Describe the biggest issue facing the city and your approach to solving it. Jaclyn Diaz, you have 90 seconds.
Our biggest issue with the City of Atalanta is awareness. A lot of people aren't even aware that Atalanta exists. When you speak to people outside of Atalanta, the first thing they mention is Victorville. That is their priority. That is their concern, and that is the only thing that they know. So the first thing would be to let Atalanta be the city that it is. It is a big, beautiful city, but unfortunately, no one sees that. No one knows that. People try to see it on the map, and guess what they get? They get El Mirage. They get Victorville. But guess what? We are overpassed. No one sees us. They don't even know that we're here. So we need to capitalize on our current resources and make those available while committing to these contracts that we currently have and extinguishing into new contracts that we need in order to make our city an actual city. People see us as a town. We're small. We're a baby. We're barely breathing. We're barely born. That is not what Atalanta is. There are people that have been living here for many, many years, and no one even knows it exists at all, none whatsoever. I only knew it exists because I drove down the freeway, you know? So I just feel like we need to bring awareness to this as a city, not as just a town.
Thank you. Daniel Ramos, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to go back to what you mentioned in question number three, economic development. We need to develop our economy a lot more, and let me explain. A lot of it has to do with energy, right? We don't, we're falling short on our energy. For the past two years, you know, as planning commissioner, I have been very supportive for the city council on attracting industries to the City of Atalanta, industries such as the Boring Company, a division of Tesla, and SpaceX, Copark, which is the largest online auto auction dealer in the world. A project also worth mentioning is our large solar project that's already 95% completed. This project is projected to offset the electrical costs to the City Hall and Sheriff Department, Public Works Yards, our wastewater treatment plant, water well sites, and our stadium. This will create a cost savings of over $900,000, right? These well-paying industries have created hundreds of temporary jobs here in the city, construction jobs to be specific, as well as permanent jobs. These jobs have created a demand for housing construction, which has attracted several of the largest home developers and builders in the state of California, such as Frontier, D.R. Horton, to name a few. And not to mention, these single-family homes are almost sold out.
Thank you. Roy Isaiah, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, sir. One of the problems I see here in our city is the great division, and everybody's dipping their hand into Atalanta with Atalanta not really getting anything in return. We don't have our own transportation service. We run our transportation service. We get our transportation service from someone else. Our schools, Atalanta High School, you know, it's owned by something else. And these are things that are here in our city, like the school that we can't even really make usage of for the youth. We try to take them to play football there, but there's always some holdup or run track there. But since it's not actually owned by Atalanta, we get the interference there. You know, we got to figure out a way to make this city free where we make the decision is if you wanted to go to this park, yeah, you can go to this park. Atalanta says you can, not because somebody else dictated to us. And we need to make sure, like Ramos said, we keep all our money here in the city so these people can continue, our residents, to buy these single-story homes, to have a home for their family and not to be homeless or in the streets. We want to keep the city clean. Right now, I see a lot of trash in the city and on the county side of it that we have to beautify to draw these moms and pops.
Thank you. Tanya Edwards, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Being a homeowner here of 10 years and raising two children here, which I'm pretty proud of, my son went right into the Air Force.
of, my son went right into the Air Force and he graduated here. Did I lose you?
We see you.
Sorry. He graduated here as a 4.0 student and that was because of the high desert. We were as a community, as a group together and this, we have to continue to look at, yes, Adelanto is by itself and Adelanto is, but we are an extension to our neighbors, to Victorville, to Hesperia. We all are as a community, we want the best for our children, but our problem is that we have a problem that's in Adelanto and it's starting to seep into these other cities and we need to be able to handle our own problems. We do have money here, we are capable to build and to grow. We do have a $6.4 million deficit. We don't have any oversight, we don't have any communities, committees, and we have lots of contracts. And the residents, they want to be part of the spending. This is what I hear over and over again as I'm out campusesing, is that, you know, we just, we want to participate. We have smart, intelligent people. My neighbor behind me, she's a scientist. I mean, I have neighbors next door, we all keep an eye out for each other. Our problem is communication. We need to build that community and build that communication. Rather than that, we have a mighty desert.
Thank you. Well, thank you, candidates. We will conclude today's forum with closing remarks. We will begin with Daniel Ramos, you have one minute. You need to unmute yourself, Daniel.
All right, sorry about that. Thank you, Mark, again, I appreciate the opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, I'm asking for your support. If you want to continue seeing job creation through new industries that we are attracting to the city, if you want to continue seeing new roads and sidewalks, parks, and much more, vote for me coming November 3rd. Vote for me come November 3rd. I will demand from our community and our residents positive energy, more positive energy and more participation. Through this campaign season, you're going to hear me say and speak a lot about energy. Energy is everything, ladies and gentlemen, so I will demand more positive energy and participation from our residents. I will demand more discussions and more clear communication from our city officials and I will demand more contributions from our incoming businesses and developers. Again, on November 3rd, I respectfully ask for your vote. I am Daniel Ramos, your current planning commissioner and your next city councilman at your service. Thank you very much and good evening to you all.
Roy Isaiah, you have one minute.
Yes, as we go into the voting and everything, we hit the polls, I feel like I'm a very strong candidate. I have a strong baggage in the community and in other communities. Like I said, I have a gym over in Victorville and I get a lot of their youth and parents coming to that gym too. Most of all, I feel like we should cut off this gap, this bridge between old Adelanto and new Adelanto and become one. And like Mr. Ramos said, we got to have positive energy. And wherever I go, I spread positive energy because the city needs that. They feed off of the energy. If it's negative, they're negative. If it's positive, they're positive. And that way, we give our city a bright, bright, bright future. And like he said, the jobs, they're needed, that's most important so our city can survive because all that revenue helps us grow and makes our residents proud, proud of Adelanto.
Thank you. Tanya Edwards, you have one minute.
Thank you. It has been a joy and an honor to actually run for city council. It's a first time, I'm not a politician and I never thought that I would actually be coming out and running and being up against mates that are just as heartfelt as I am for our community. And, you know, spinning my wheels and jumping into the, starting the coalition and listening to people. It's not just about what I want to do, but really listening to people and learning about what people want and how they feel and what they want to see as I become a senior and what I want to see here for myself and for other seniors. I want to see community that can be connected again. And I want us all to be able to have a city that is engaged and sharing together. It's not a kumbaya, this is a growth and this is going to take a partnership. You can't disappear, people. Please vote for Tanya Edwards, November 3rd.
Thank you. Jaclyn Diaz, you have one minute.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight and share my views and answer some questions. I just want to say that I, as a new resident for years here in Adelanto, I just want to say, from what I've seen, from what I know and what I live on a daily basis, I prefer that we operate as a large city, not as a small city. We are a community, we are more powerful than we believe. I will not make promises, so do not vote for me because you believe in a promise. Vote for me because you believe that any plan that I actually execute will actually go forward. I'm not looking for your vote because I want to be in office. I'm looking for your vote because I want to be a community. I want us to be united as one going forward. Thank you for your time and I appreciate this opportunity.
On behalf of the Adelanto and Victor Valley Chambers of Commerce, I'd like to once again thank the candidates for their participation in today's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once the Adelanto City Council forums have been completed. Thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe and healthy. Have a good evening.